Welcome. My name is Justin Larkman, the Chair of the Planning Commission. Purpose of this Planning Commission study session is to present San Jose 2040 General Plan 2.3 Annual Report. Members of the public are welcome to participate and no action will be taken by the Commission. We'll start with a roll call. I'm Justin Larkman here. Mike Schrader is not here. Commissioner Barocia?
Here.
Commissioner Bigford is not here. Nor are Cantrell, Casey, Garcia, Obarrio, or Bizarro. Commissioner Fardios?
Here.
Commissioner Young?
Here.
And we don't need quorum, so we'll move on. Call the board today and then public comment. Public comments to plan. This is the time on the agenda for public comments to planning commission on non-agenda items. If you're not taking a formal action without the item being properly noticed, place it on the agenda. In response to public comment, the planning commission is limited to following options. As long as the statement is made, your question is spoken versus the public. Or requesting staff report back on matter at a subsequent meeting. Or directing staff to place the item on a future agenda. And at this time, the city is only accepting public comment in person. Do we have anyone in the room who'd like to give a comment?
I want to see what you say. I might say something later.
Okay.
What do you say?
And then, okay, given that we don't have anyone here for non-agenda's public comment, we'll continue on to the study session presentation. And everybody, chef.
Thank you, Mr. Commissioner, Chair. Thank you, everybody, for coming here. Good evening. My name is Sanita Koshal. I'm the Supervising Planner in the General Planning Team. And today I'm joined here by my colleague, who is one of the partners in my team, and is going to share the presentation floor with me. We also have Wilson Tien, Transportation Planning Manager from Department of Transportation, to answer any questions for his directions. We also have Rebecca Ross, Supervising Planner in PRMS, who's available online for any questions of ground support. And I have another planner in my front team, Lawrence Moore, also available online for any background support. We have received information and data from Department of Environmental Services and Office of Environmental Development, in addition to PRMS and DOT. And so I want to acknowledge all my partners and my team in preparing this report and preparing to this presentation. Thank you very much, everybody. Can't do without you.
And before you continue, just want to acknowledge some of your cases. Sorry.
So today we are going to present the highlights of the Invisi in San Jose 2040 General Plan Annual Report for 2023. This is a state-level report, and it's also made in reference by the General Plan Policy. The PowerPoint is that way. I'm here. I know it's kind of confusing, but we just have the logo. At the next slide, please. So the General Plan, as we all know, sets forth a vision and a comprehensive roadmap to guide the city's continued growth through the year 2040. It contains 12 major strategies that you can see on the slides here, right here, and then the goals and policies that achieve the vision of the General Plan. They guide the standards for city services, land use patterns, and the quality of lifetime development. And today, this annual report that we are presenting on today is organized around these 12 major strategies, and analyzed based on data from fiscal year 2022. So how the presentation was good today is for each of these strategies. We are going to give you an overview of the strategy and then present a summary of the implementation highlights for each of them. And I will be presenting in the proceedings on a few ones, and then Mike will take over and present on the rest of these strategies. Next slide, please. So to set the context for today's presentation, as we look at the highlights of this year, going back in 2011, the past land use patterns before that have resulted in a predominance of low-density, single-family residential uses. As you can see on this map, we are located in a presence. Single-family residential using San Jose, 43% of city's total land area, and 94% of the land that is designated for residential is single-family residential use. So compared to this, only approximately about 13.5% of land area is job generating or employed land. So these segregated land uses in the past, patterns from the past resulted in fiscal, quality of life, and environmental impacts to San Jose. And that those policies and strategies of the envisioned San Jose 2040 adopted in 2011 seeks to build a different future for the city. With this in mind, next slide, please, we go into look at the strategies. Strategy number one, major strategy one is that community-based planning. This is a commitment to effectively engage all segments of the community in a meaningful planning process. Public outreach is implemented in the planning department using city's public outreach policy, Council Policy 6-30. The table here on the left side shows all the number of community meetings in which this career and number of attendance, community members who attended the meeting in fiscal year 2022. You see the numbers on top. And most of the meetings are, unfortunately, still. Some meetings, as you see in the picture on the right, are in person. But this is for the side most urban to the street, and also some meetings for housing. Next slide, please. So this is four-based plan, strategy number two, which uses land use designations and general plans' goals and policies to address the form, character, and densities for long-term development in San Jose. It aims to maintain and create profitable and cohesive neighborhoods while allowing for flexibility within the land use designations. This is not a major goal. The design guidelines, the citywide design guidelines, and all of the downtown and other 200 blocks of the city in the planning department are used for maintaining and enhancing the character of the neighborhood in this identified in this strategy. Next slide, please. This is major strategy three, focused growth. This strategy focuses new residential and population growth capacity in specifically identified growth areas that we can see in the map on the right-hand side of all types of growth areas in different colors. This approach is meant to reduce environmental impacts, improve city's fiscal health, and preserve established neighborhoods. As you can see in the statistics, the building permits since 2011 and the building permits in fiscal year 2223, they all are almost more than, generally speaking, 80% is in the growth areas, except some outline numbers. Do you have any stuff and acknowledge others also?
Yeah. Want to go into Commissioners Bigford, Marcy, and Bizarro with us?
Sorry, wait.
Let's see. Cantrell. You can take my spot. Did I say something? I'm so sorry.
That's okay.
If we finish, we don't need.
I read the assignment, that's why.
We don't need our own. Let me play with the motion. Yeah.
Thank you, and welcome, other commissioners, and good evening. And we are continuing our research, but we can go to the next slide, please. So this is a little bit more details in the trend of the issue for residential projects since that we were original. Since the, well, we have issued a total of approximately 32,000 building permits for housing, which is approximately 2,666 units per year. Some of the notable trends that you can see here, one is for mother family, which is shown in the blue, as the blue bars. They have remained below average since about 2019, 2020. And it's kind of in 2022, 2023, coming in kind of a little bit above the previous year, but kind of coming similar. San Jose has significantly decreased again to 31 units last year, and it is lowest since the planned house plan was adopted in 2011. And 80 units numbers have increased every fiscal year since 2016, 17, 2016, 17. Except for the last year, there was a 16% drop to 451 units. It still remains significantly above the average number of units. So consistent with the General Plan policies of focusing growth, housing production overall since 2011, 2012, like adoption of the General Plan, 86% is mother family, 6% is civil society, and 7.5% is individuals. Right, can you go to the next slide, please? Next slide. So this is about commercial and industrial construction, new construction. And around 2011, 2012, the major trends to note in the commercial that is shown in red is from those two years, 1920 and 2021, there was a big increase. And then since then, there is a sharp decline. And then for industrial, we can see that from 17, 18, 19, there was a decline. And then it's kind of generally speaking, kind of declining. One number, the number that we are not showing here are the alteration numbers. Alteration numbers are generally up overall. So it suggests that there is more interest in altering existing spaces for various reasons than versus constructing new.
Can I, can I ask, do you have a plan to add alterations to the next iteration of this report? Or can you do that?
Sure, we can. I don't remember because in the report, but we can add it to the presentation for sure.
Well, and there's also the documentifying the forecast. There's another document that this group produces that is an activity report, how much connectivity there is, including valuations on industrial, commercial, and residential. And then it's a forecast of what's projected in the future. So that's actually on the website now. Correctors are going up.
It's not on the website, but we can send them. That's at the beginning.
Okay, and that has all of that.
Okay, so this is the strategy, major strategy for innovation, regional, and private sector, which seeks to transform San Jose from a bedroom community to a regional private sector. This strategy supports job growth with existing, within existing job centers, housing hubs, new also premium performing brands, and designated jobs centers near regional manifestations. One of the primary goals of this strategy is to achieve a jobs-to-employed, employed-residence, J slash U R ratio of 1.1 jobs for a re-employed resident. The job plan plans 282,000 jobs, new jobs, and sets a goal to reverse the imbalance of jobs to housing. So the table below shows, on the top right-hand side is the number for 23. The jobs-to-employed ratio is 0.79, which is.
Prediction for when? We'll get over 0.9?
I don't know. I think the original goal was point, it was three jobs per worker in San Jose, and then it was, I think it was three. 1.3, 1.3 jobs. Thank you very. And then we reduced it in one of the free reviews to 1.1 if you were real estate. And I think in the next, I forget the year, it's a year or two from now, it's just to get to one. And so you can see, we're not really moving anywhere. We're kind of actually going back. So I, I don't know, you know. It's not looking good.
Are those remote workers affiliated in this ratio?
I do not know how we get this number from our OP friends. I hope we can find.
I would imagine it's probably based on where the employer is. So if they're, if they're working for, you know, Google or San Jose or whatever, it assumes that they're there, even though they might be working at home. If they're working at Apple and Cupertino, but they might be working at home in Little Land, but it assumes they're working. So I don't, is this actually factored in? But I don't believe it factors in working from home.
For those employees, we count as employed residents, but not jobs.
I think that's. It counts as jobs based on where their employer is. Traditionally, I think they would work on the employer's site, but now it's a little weird. The workers are a measurement of how many workers we have that have jobs in within San Jose. And might be some of them now are working at home, even though their employer is another city. It's a little, it's not as, it's a little more messy.
If I could follow up, we'll just, but the purpose of measuring this is because of tax revenue from employers, right? So that's why it's.
Not, well, that's one of the reasons, but not entirely. So I just want to step back for a minute. So you have to remember, or maybe you don't remember, I was there. I was there too. Gene was there, that this general plan is a product of the Great Recession. And there are like, there's a ton of unemployment. The cities caught, we laid off, I mean, we lost like 35, 40% of our police force, 40% of our planners, nothing to care about that. But so it was, it was a really severe time. And so this plan was called a Jobs First Plan. It's really not called that anymore because we're really focused a lot more on housing, frankly, but it's more about balance of having both. So the issue of San Jose not having a match of jobs to housing. And let me just say this, we're the only large city in America, over 500,000, that doesn't have a ratio of one or better. Even Detroit has a better jobs-to-housing ratio. That's why it's a lot of people moved away. But they still have jobs there. So the, and the three, I would say the three gross main effects of that are obviously fiscal because housing, gross generalization, but housing tends to not generate as much revenue as the residents demand in services for code enforcement, libraries, parks, filling potholes. So housing, new housing is generally a money winner, right? Because it's brand new, taxes go up, mortgages go up, and overtime, housing generally becomes a big loser. Businesses, industrial, commercial, generally are either, they don't, they either generate revenue or they don't generate a lot of revenue, but none of them demand a lot of services. So they're net neutral or positive. Of course, things, you know, retail is that positive. Manufacturing is often net positive as much as we have that. And then we have a lot of taxes on equipment, like servers and whatnot. So we get a lot of revenue from that as well. So it is a fiscal, it was very much driven by the fiscal issues. As a matter of fact, we talked a lot about sustainability. We were thinking this part was environmental sustainability, but the task force said, and fiscal sustainability. So, but there are two other main issues with being imbalanced. One, I would say, is environmental. So, I mean, this is a pre-pandemic Denver, right? But prior to the pandemic, it was about 60% of our workforce completed in hours in San Jose in the morning. So, you know, you could go to Highway 101 at 8:30 in the morning, and it was a parking lot going north, and you could go 120 miles an hour if you wanted to. Right? So people I know that looked at Mountain View, it'd take them 45 minutes to go, what is that, 12 miles? You know, right? Do you probably know that? So, so there's environmental impacts because of the transportation. The majority of greenhouse gases, I think it's 51% or so. The slight majority is from transportation, tailpipe emissions, and so that was creating a lot of environmental impacts. The other third reason was, I would say, quality of life and health. So, you know, in New York City, people walk a lot for everything, to go to the corner market, to go, they, they walk to see their friends in the park. They might want to work, they take the subway, but they get the subway and they have to walk. We're a city of cars driving for everything everywhere. And so because many people are driving long distances, sitting in traffic, it's actually affecting their quality of life. So they're spending time maybe with their family and their friends. They're sitting in a car, and it's also, sitting in a car phone, because time is not good for your health, you know? Your weight, blood pressure, heart condition, all of that stuff. So it has quality of life and health impacts too. Those two other things, health and quality of life and environmental, sort of got in that time, but it almost fell to the side by the fiscal. But they were also talked about too, Brad, and I would say they're equally perhaps might be more important from a larger perspective, if you look beyond just the city building.
So.
So in terms of deriving the data here, though, how do you make the headcount? Is there a tax on? I'm from San Jose. There's one tax that we've been saying. So is there a per-head tax to businesses for employees? How we try to.
I can, I'm sorry.
Yeah, go ahead.
So in the report, I'm just reading out the report. So this data is city monitors' job, but using a combination of data from the US Census Bureau's American Community Survey and payroll data from C E D D, which is. Yes.
So that's, so they are counted regardless of whether they're home or not, because it's payroll.
I have a question. Do we know, other than attracting Apple to Cupertino, what Cupertino has done to methodically and progressively increase their number?
Not that people live there.
I think they, they, they're not a wall. And, yeah. So, I mean, Cupertino, they have Apple, so that's the big employer there. I don't think they have a lot of other major.
Yeah, that's why I was kind of surprised about this number.
I think there was a few years ago, there, I think there was a year where they built 10 units a thousand in one year.
I don't, I can't.
It's a small number.
And I, I don't know if you guys know, I can't speak to the people that, frankly, it's not in the room right now, but I can't speak to why, or if you can, why Cupertino in 2012 was 1.2 ratio and is now 2.26. I don't know.
That's a good news.
I don't know why that is. Yeah, that's true. Cupertino's head mothership landed, I mean, Apple's mothership. That was probably when, 2017 or something, 2018.
But that was a consolidation.
Yeah, I think they're already there. So I don't know.
They were chastised pretty bad by the state or the area of local governance about how much their housing.
I would be pleased to be comparing just land use, you know, some of the maps in regards to zoning, like how much zoning is residential, how much is industrial, how much is commercial compared to our city and our size.
So we have that information. It's in a, I don't know, is it in here?
I think she was asking for analysis.
No, but we have that actually, because we, so we did do that analysis back in 2015 for a land state initiative council, and we showed like what percentage of the surrounding's land was residential versus commercial, industrial. So we have that data. But generally, what you see, San Jose has some of the lowest percentage of employment land, which is industrial, commercial. I don't, one of the lowest, I don't know, the lowest, probably the lowest major for sure. But we do have that information, but it's a very small percentage relative to other cities.
Oh, they large plan, that's the overall to those.
We do, yeah. So in absolute number, we probably have a lot more than one cities, but as a percentage, we have a lot.
But the percentage, what?
Our percentage is 13%. And do you know, when we say like, you know, I think you said something, 47% is somewhere around that, including all of the green open space?
No, that's, that's four.
And within a city on a miss? Okay.
I have a question in this area also, actually in relation to job growth and population growth. You know, because of things that's changed so much since the plan was written and, you know, our population growth's actually not, it's a decline, right? I'm just curious how you all, can you modify these at this point? Or does it have, do you have to wait for the four-year update? Or how is, it's just weird because you look at the graphs and they're like so divergent. And it's pretty clear, I think, to all of us that they're going to remain divergent. So I'm just wondering, do you guys adjust the projections and can you?
Yeah, so typically when we give these, that's part of the four-year review. Sometimes we make, we call them either like force projections or adjustments, but that's when they happen, yeah.
And that'll be in.
Well, we'll talk about that at the end.
Oh, that's coming.
Okay, so last thing, one, two, which is what Commissioner Yuen was just talking about, the jobs and the population numbers. So the graph on the left-hand side shows the, both of the, showing the clean natural numbers. So that's on the left-hand side, shows the population growth. The dotted line, gray line, shows the population projection. And we can see the population graph in 2020, and then there was a sharp decrease, and now there's like a slow. So we're pleased since then. And the plot numbers are shown on the right-hand side. And it's kind of similar numbers, trends that you're seeing there. It's an actual numbers here that I will have to share with you. So overall, 2082,000 new jobs are planned, right? That's the gray line for the general plan's lifetime, which means that you need to average approximately 18,000 new jobs per year to achieve that number. In 2022, city gains 5,106 new job numbers, new jobs, which is a one-person increase, a slight increase from the previous year. This is 39% of the yearly goal for clean jobs. Overall, city has gained nearly 61,000 new jobs since 2011, so that number on the left, one left side. So approximately a 17% increase from 2011. And the total number for 2022, as shown on the graph, is 133,000, 2011, and something like jobs.
Was this, that projection is spinning 2011?
Yes, that. I do know that this was updated during 2015.
Yeah, so a couple of things. So the rejected job, that's, that's, I'm sorry, the planned job growth.
Yes.
That's the general plan's goal. And I just want to say that we hired Steve Levy from, like, California Continuum Study of the California County, from Vallejo Alto. And he did projections on population and jobs. And his projection said, you're not going to get this number of jobs. This is not realistic. But the task force and the council at the time were like, we don't care. We're going to really focus and double down on the jobs. And we need some aspirational goal. So that's the goal. There was, the professionals, experts said we would not be able to achieve that. But nevertheless, he wanted to set a stretch goal. So I just want to have that caveat. It was partially because of that reason that when we came back into four-year review, after the general plan was approved, we ratcheted the job number down significantly. It's still above one, right? It's 1.1 job per worker in San Jose, but it was down to 1.3, so.
So on the, on the population side, there's no projected change at all, is there?
Yeah, we have it updated. We have it, yeah. So that has, that hasn't been updated in a while. Now, according to the Joint Venture Stillkind Valley's report last week, it said that the population of areas now starting to increase again for the first time in a few years. I don't know if that also applies to San Jose. I would assume this is everybody here in this big area, and I don't know.
It is margin.
Yeah, marginally.
What's the benefit of creating a spread score?
I think.
An aspirational goal.
Yeah, I mean, it's hard because we don't control a lot of this, but I think it, it helps drive city initiatives to achieve the goals. I would say that, putting resources at it, making cities focus on trying to bring the economy. So that's, I would say that would be the main.
Yeah, estimation of what's there? See the range grade on that estimate?
I think the better question is, was there an actual plan or was there just an aspiration?
Well, a lot of the planning for jobs was making sure we had the land, there's the land, there's the basis to accommodate that growth. And the goal is to support it and try to drive that economic development. We don't really have a lot of economic development tools in the city. Our economic development department is very small. And they're very focused on very limited things. A lot of their work already has to do with the flea market relocation and small business displacement because of gentrification. So we, we don't have, in that, there is redevelopment. We did have. So we, we don't have, in fact, that is redevelopment, we did have, we, the second, one of the wealthiest redevelopments, state, but those days are gone, so we don't have a lot of. So a lot of it has to do with the policies, the goals that we have in the general plan. And, you know, there are times where we try to incent development by, I kind of joke that one thing to see is, is we create costs and obstacles and requirements and then to facilitate something we want, we lower them for that, you know, but there's some truth in that sometimes. So we try to clear, like, you know, streamline whatever it is and clear obstacles and costs for that type of development. So that's kind of the, but the city doesn't have a lot of money to invest in proactively attracting businesses on this thing, so.
Okay, and it's five thirty and I think we need to end at six, right? So we should move on. We have about twenty minutes, but the general plan mission was about three minutes. All right, so next, the next slide please. So this is major strategy number five, urban villages, which, which promotes the development of urban villages that are active, walkable and transit oriented mixed use settings for new housing and job growth. In total, the general plan identifies approximately sixty-three urban villages that you can see on the map on the right hand side and plans for approximately sixty-five thousand housing and housing sixteen thousand jobs in these urban villages. The plans are urban village plans for each of these villages are expected to be developed for each area over the timeframe of the general plan. The next slide. This slide is a snapshot of the progress made for the urban village strategy in this is for mostly in two thousand and twenty to two thousand and twenty-three. So far, we have sixteen urban village plans that has been adopted by Council. The latest one, Capital Countering Urban Village Plan, was approved in March of two thousand and twenty-two, last fiscal year. Four previously approved urban village plans have started the planning process, going through a planning process to update them and consolidated them into one new plan. You can see that on the first row of the table, it's those four plans.
Five ones.
Yes, five ones and then the others there, which is expected to be adopted by the end of this year. We have two urban village plans that are to be initiated in summer of two thousand and twenty-four. You can see them in the last two rows of the table. Going to signature projects, general plan has a policy for allowing signature projects, which are mixed use residential projects of its exemplary nature that can move forward in urban villages that doesn't have a general, oh, sorry, an urban village plan yet. We have a total of nine signature projects that has received entitlement so far. And one, so the Sparta Student Housing Signature Project on tenth and Santa Clara Street that finished construction last fiscal year. The Orchard Signature Project on North Capitol Avenue has completed almost all residential, working on its commercial, so it's like partial construction done last year. And the one that's under construction on that, on this slide is the Bascom Station Signature Project, which is on South Bascom Road and South.
That's working.
Yes. There's also a general plan policy for allowing hundred percent affordable housing to move forward in signature in urban villages without an adopted urban village plan. One affordable housing project, which is called that one, affordable housing on South Bascom that completed construction last year. And three other affordable housing projects are under construction.
There's more than that, it's just that they, those are the ones that went forward without a plan, right? Yeah, yeah, so there's many more than that. Construction of that, it's just that they got under, under a plan.
Isn't it a hundred units minimum?
I'm saying it again.
Is there a hundred units minimum for that?
No, hundred percent affordable housing.
Yeah, there's no.
I thought a hundred units.
No problem. I have a question. It's, this is, I'm going to skip ahead and go to major strategy nine, might just want to cover us of them. This is kind of in the same line as the road area. So this is destination downtown, which supports continued growth of downtown at the Public Cultural Center and has important employment and residential neighborhood, constituent of general plan plans for a significant number of employment and housing growth in this, in the downtown area. And you can see the entitlement numbers, oh, wait, I think we went ahead and do, to the previous. So the entitlements since two thousand and eleven are given at the bottom of this slide. We can now move to the next one, which is the entitlement for this fiscal year. About three thousand residential units and three point five million square feet of commercial office. The commercial vacancy in downtown last year was thirty percent, which jumped from twenty-one percent in the previous, previous fiscal year, which is one of the big factors is two hundred Park Avenue, that's one million square feet of office without any tenants that completed last, last year and was calculated in this.
Yeah, I mean, I think this is entitlements, this gives the ability, the right of people to build, but given the office market at thirty percent, I don't know how much of this is going to be built. And given that the cost of construction and projects are not feasible, particularly high rises, I don't know how much of this is going to be built. So these are the titles that question marks.
And happy event, which is downtown is of course where we need that, that event to take place during COVID nineteen pandemic, there were no or very few events. It's the data shows that the number of events have gone up to COVID, pre-COVID, eight hundred times, about ninety-seven units last, ninety-seven, so events last year with one point one million attendees. And move on to, so housing is not, it's a separate major strategy in the general plan, but it plays an integral role in the general plan, leaving the housing element and as a component of many other major strategies. This graph shows hundred twenty thousand planned units that we were talking about in the general plan and to meet the goals, it will require, you know, so, sorry, to, it will require about three thousand seven hundred units a year to be built. You can see the two other lines, one is the housing crisis for plan, which actually not projection, goal, and then the current housing goal. Yes. So already, I had mentioned in the previous slides that we were last, that since two thousand and eleven, we have an averaging two thousand six hundred sixty-six residential unit building permits on average. So three thousand seven hundred is the goal of this, so that's the delta that needs to be added, just a perspective. Go to the next slide, which is, you are all aware that we just adopted the sixth cycle housing moment and the numbers on the, we, the top table shows the housing allocation for the city broken down by the affordability levels and the total, which is fifteen percent of the regional housing allocation. And the table at the bottom shows the data for last year. This is the calendar year of two thousand and twenty-three data shown there. Total number of affordable units is eighteen, one thousand eight hundred thirty units. We see building permits, which is forty percent of the renewables and one thousand two hundred seventy-four market grade units got building permit, which is thirty-five percent of vehicles. And again, this is a calendar year.
So we're doing a very good, you know, affordable building and electric, so that's really unusual. Because there's been a lot of public money for affordable housing and the capital markets do not want to finance market rate other, for reasons we probably all know.
All right, so we, my, who's going to take over right now?
So major strategy six is the streetscape for people. This strategy emphasizes a human centered street network, supporting a more equitable environment, environmentally sustainable, economically dynamic, dense and transit oriented city. The goals and policies of the general plan encourage the development of complete communities where residents can walk or bike and have access to parks and trails. So a couple, a few highlights from two thousand and twenty-three, the Better Bike Plan two thousand and twenty-five, they built seventeen miles of new bike ways. As of today, four hundred seventy-seven miles are of on-street bike net, bike network. And then the city in totality has five hundred forty-two miles of usable bike network of on-street and off-street. The second highlight, the U S one-on-one Blossom Hill Interchange, it's a multi-trail, multi-use trail, bike pet trail that goes across one-on-one. It was well received by the public and claimed several awards for the project. The last one, just to note quickly, is the East Ridge Bar Regional Connector. This project is supposed to start construction in early spring two thousand and twenty-four.
That's extension wide rail down Capitol from our great companies now.
Next up, please. So moving on to strategy seven, it's the, this one's measurable sustainability and environmental stewardship. So this strategy recognizes the general plan as a tool to minimize impacts on resource consumption, minimize contributions to global warming and the preservation of the natural environments as it relates to growth and development. So the climate smart San Jose aims to reduce greenhouse gas emissions below the nineteen ninety levels. The climate smart plan uses the general plan as a foundation, goes further. Three, two points here, they, the creating, it creates a pathway for San Jose to reach the target of eighty percent greenhouse gas reductions, which is the state's target by two thousand and fifty, and then the progress can be tracked on the climate smart data dashboard. Next slide, please. So some notable highlights here, the graph on the right depicts climate smarts, the orange dots is just the climate smart inventories in combination with some other inventories and programs combined. So you can see there, they are on a path of reduction. A couple of notable highlights, the Climate Advisory Commission was created, Reach Code Ordinance updates occurred in efficiency requirements for mixed fuel buildings and solar ready requirements, as well as electrification ready requirements. And then there's a few programs under climate smart that kicked off. There's a zero emissions neighborhood, Zen Pilot Program, which detail encompasses sustainable gardening and zero emission urban transit. There's the electric homes, so tries to apply two hundred fifty technologies to incorporate into homes for all electric. Induction cooktops is a free program for residents to try out induction, electric induction cooktops. And lastly is the. Oh, geez, the. Go Green Team Program, which offers information to the public regarding climate smart San Jose, which acts, what actions they can take to help contribute towards those, that program in reducing the greenhouse gas emissions.
Just a quick question, the line going up to the right, the top, is that the climate smart plan business as usual? I mean, this is the, what we're measuring against?
Yeah, I believe, and yes, T, I can follow up, get some more clarification from yes, but I believe thus their kind of best standard versus applying all these other plans and inventories where it's showing the decline. Next, please. So major strategy, strategy eight is the fiscal strong city. This strategy establishes least schools and policies that promote a balance of revenue and cost to allow the city to improve the delivery of municipal services. A key component of this strategy is to preserve employment lands, as mentioned before, since commercial development has the most beneficial impacts on the city's fiscal and the ability to provide services. Next slide, please. So as you can see in the graph, this is showing the general fund, general plan. So I'll keep going key. So the key measures for determining the city's fiscal strength is the capital operating budgets, including the capital improvements program, the C I P. In fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three, the adopted budget totals six billion for all city funds, which is one point eight percent more than the last, the previous fiscal year. The city's general fund is the primary operating fund used to account for all revenues and expenditures of the city. For the current fiscal year, the budget office projected a surplus of thirty-five point three million for the year, the year of twenty-three, twenty-four, followed by a shortfall of eighteen point eight million in twenty-four, twenty-five, with small potential surpluses in the following years. Next slide.
You probably don't know this, but I'm curious if they readjusted that.
They do.
Right? Because, and if you guys have heard, that the state is determined we're out of compliance for stormwater permit because of all the homeless that we have in creeks and we're going to have to go get them all out of there. And yes, it was twenty-five million dollars, the general fund dollars to get people out of the creeks that we don't have, that could really have a shortfall and then you have to. Add twenty-five million on top of that, so that's going to have real impacts to departments, significant impacts to departments for the general fund.
Can that cost be shared with the water district?
They probably, that's a very good question. I don't know, I'm sure they can help pay for it if they want to, but I think they skin is.
I think this was on Monday.
Yeah.
There's a water district meeting tomorrow. You can go, it'll probably come, it'll be an understatement.
So moving on to the strategy ten, this one's the life amounts abundant natural resources. This strategy promotes the city's natural environment and reinforcement of the urban growth boundary. The strategy also promotes building a world class trail network and continuing to build parks for the city's residents. So some twenty-three highlights, we had five acres of new parkland. There were six park openings, which include Tamian, Helenville, Hellier, Solari, Delong, Delano, Monogue's and the Vietnamese Heritage Garden. There was three miles of new trails, over fifty-seven Viva Parks events and three Viva Kai events were hosted last year. Through the Beautify S J Initiative, there was a bi-weekly garbage pickup service, ensuring the cooperation with the cleanliness standards in over two hundred fifty active areas of homelessness encampments. And there was two all-inclusive playgrounds, the Guadalupe River Rotary Park Garden was an expansion and the Lincoln Glen was a new sensory playground.
But there are only three miles of this?
Uh, yeah, and those are off-street trails, not on-street. Yeah, they, yeah. I can get the specific, I don't recall, I don't think they mentioned which ones. We can get them the answer.
And I'm also curious if, if our trails do seem to connect to the county trails, to which then.
Yeah, we can ask Pierre, I don't know if they know offhand, but we can follow up with the, where those overlaps with the connection.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, right now, I think they are the three Creeks Trail, the Creeks Trail, the Hudson Creek Trail, they're both completed. And then the design face for the County Two Trail between Mayberry and Empire Street have been completed. But that piece has not been constructed, just design faces.
Okay.
But the ones that have been completed, construction.
That's what I'm saying.
We increased our time to process. I think we, I mean, we. They're working on it. I knew just that ten minutes left, so.
Uh, next slide, please. So the strategy eleven is designed for healthful communities. So this strategy supports the physical health of the community by promoting walking, biking and encouraging access and encourage, and walking and bicycling. Goals and policies of the general plan encourage the development of complete communities where residents can walk or bike and have access to parks and trails. So a couple of highlights on this, the graph you can see on the upper right. Oh. Oh, apologies, this got wrong visual on this. Okay, I'll just keep going. So vision zero, there's two points, vision zero, there was, it utilized thirteen million to expand the city's priority corridors. We, the vision zero completed nine point two miles of quick build safety improvement projects and launched the slowdown campaign. So the slowdown campaigns down below, you can see the different forms of awareness, the billboards, all that. awareness, the billboards, all that. The second point is the community forests. So there was a planting of over two thousand trees. They completed a tree inventory for the city parks. Funding was secured for planting a thousand street trees annually and a community forest advisory committee was established. And next slide, please. So the strategy twelve establishes a four-year review cycle, which provides an opportunity for the city to evaluate changes in planning context and the city's achievement of key goals. So previously, we had two major reviews of the general plan that have occurred. Anticipated updates for the general plan include an update to the safety and the open space elements and the addition of a new environmental justice element by January twenty twenty six. The safety element updates will incorporate the new safety standards, risk assessment processes and emergency preparedness. The open space element will focus on improving parks and open space while incorporating environmental justice policies. The new environmental justice element will address health risks in disadvantaged communities and incorporate policies to address any unequitable health risks in these communities. Next slide, please.
So if you want to go back, so questions about the four-year reviews, we've done two four-year reviews. Technically, the third four-year view should have started in November of last year. We are not proposing or recommending doing that four-year review right now for a number of reasons. One is, we just got through the housing element. Those are the four-year reviews, not entirely, but largely are focused on housing. We've got a lot of great stuff. We're gonna be doing the housing, we didn't really see a need and we're not getting feedback. We need to do more of the elements in the housing element. Secondly, we have to now update the two new, the two elements up there, safety and open space, and create a new, a new environmental justice element. So we're gonna be focused on that. And thirdly, we haven't actually fully implemented the last four-year review. We're still working on the recommendations there. Any of them been done? We have two things left. We have to come up with a proposal to potentially expand S B nine type housing to duplex lot and create standards of how it can be integrated with historic properties, not impacting historic resources. And then we also have to create a general, a zone governance framework to allow housing in the neighborhood business districts that are not in the villages. So those two things are still being done. So for those three reasons, we are, we're not recommending a four-year review at this time. And thus far, we haven't been getting direction from council.
Yes, so lastly, the, there were linked to general privately initially, general plan amendments that were approved in December of twenty twenty three, as you can see on the slide. And.
And I just want to know that typically the way it works is that you hear this before you would consider the general plan amendments for that year. But because of the lack, we wanted to get these to you guys for consideration. So this is a little bit backwards, but this coming year, I don't even think we had general amendments for coming this, next. This coming, this, in the fall of this year. But the idea is we do this year in the fall and then twenty twenty five, you would do this presentation for me first and then you would consider.
What is our assessment of the urban plan abilities, just in general, whether or not that's something we should continue to pursue or how successful it's been to date?
Yeah, I would say that urban villages have had a lot of challenges. There was a lot of criticism that we required a lot of commercial and residential initially. And again, jobs first plan, right? So there was a real reluctance to give up our employment, commercial lands for housing unless we got significant job, commercial growth with the housing that was creating challenges for. A lot of that has been stripped away. Probably is more than what you could do. What's happened since really about twenty nineteen is even before COVID is that the type of housing that's planned in urban villages, which is typically, you know, five, six, seven story buildings, occasionally taller. That product is very complicated to build. It's hard to assemble land. It's very expensive and hard to recap. And so the rents, astronomical as they were, still supported that type of development in the western parts of the city. Not, for example, in Alamo or in many parts of San Jose. But the rents now, the costs are so high relative to the rents. A lot of it is labor and materials costs and then there's really high interest rates right now. So right now, we're not seeing anything being proposed or go for. It's just, it's, it's crickets. And that's just housing. It's kind of everything. Like if you look at the permits that we get in the door, it's retaining wall, cellular tower, on sale of alcohol, grocery store, that's what we're getting in the door. We're not seeing big stuff right now. So I think going forward, we have this in our housing element. And the sales age in large extent is about preserving that majority of our land or most of the majority of the single family homes and preserving and protecting that. And then, you know, going big and building six, seven story buildings in the urban villages. And I think what's missing from our general plan is that missing bill. That's sort of, you know, allowing small-time developers to build fourplexes, sixplexes, eightplexes or townhomes and that sort of thing. Townhomes typically are big developers, but anyway. So I think that one of the strategies we have in general plan is trying to figure out how we can accommodate that middle density in the city, which is something that, you know, is gonna be challenging, honestly. The city is completely built out. We have very little vacant land. It's all redevelopment. And we, I think there is a reluctance to give up a lot of our urban village plan for lower density. So it's more about where else can we allow housing development is, is, is greater, maybe greater density than this there now. But wouldn't be, you know, four, five, six, seven story buildings. So that, that's what I'm trying to.
Okay, my development use time points, there's been a few instances where we have projects that come in that check all the boxes with the availability despite community. An example is the Winchester Hotel.
So this time, let's do public comment and then the planning mission Q and A afterwards. So. Everyone, if you'd like to comment.
I'll go.
Okay, please say your name in your two minutes.
My name is Jean Dresden and I'm here today to comment on what's missing from the report Michael has alluded to. He talked about all of the entitlements citywide and the entitlements downtown. But he didn't describe how few actually have been constructed. The actual number wasn't put up there. And so the best I was able to find was from a newspaper article from eighteen months ago. And when you calculated out, only about a hundred and forty units a year were built downtown out of those eleven thousand entitled since twenty eleven. I point this out because I happen to be park passionate. And there's a current discussion about extending the discounts for park fees and construction and conveyance tax, because supposedly that's an incentive for construction. As even back in twenty eleven, when interest rates were low, we were only building an average of a hundred and forty units. So it's very clear, it's not an incentive for construction. The, the experts came and talked in October to the council and said that large projects require big funding from big banks that want six and a half percent return, rather than what the local small banks do for small, missing middle projects, which is only a five percent return. So we are in the wrong product for right now. We're talking about putting in a citywide discount on these fees. All construction in parks, thirty jobs, all maintenance in parks comes out of construction and conveyance tax and the park trust fund fees. It also affects all of the goals relative to Vision Zero and thirty jobs in the Department of Transportation. That's part of what's missing in this report relative to the goals. Thank you.
Thank you.
So Larry Ames, our advocate also. And so also I was kind of wondering about your jobs from employee ratio. You count among workers, I mean, it is changing now. So people are working at home. So you want to push the state maybe to recognize that change in taxes somehow to encourage more development in housing. If you, right now, you're pushing for commercial because of the tax purposes, you want to accommodate that. Curious about why the, with the, when the emphasis on more housing, that's gonna make the employee ratio more even worse. So you need to do something here. And giving up work lands for housing, that's opposite of your mission statement number eight there. Does the population drop? Do we actually need more housing? I mean, are houses sitting on being vacant or there's lower density? I mean, yes, I'm on the empty nest now. So there are a few people in my house, but it's not happening citywide or their houses just sitting on being empty or built too many houses is going to cause a housing shortage. You talk about the urban village plans. So Five Rooms has a plan that they worked on, the community's worked on for quite a few years. And now I understand it's being changed. I don't, I'm not following directly, but I've heard people are grumbling that they're changing it. They don't like what's happening to it. So why, why change the community input there? I heard that Vision Zero got canceled. So you have all these great things while it's doing and then it's going away. So any update on that? And yes, echo, parks are very important. If you have it as a goal, they're number seven, number ten. Yes, they are really important for the people who are in it. Can't just give them away like this. Especially when you make new housing, the identity houses, these people don't have the backyard. I mean, I live in a house with nice backyards. I don't need my local parks. But when you build a high-rise apartments or high-density housing, the parks are there. You need to be able to get out and get some fresh air and exercise. And so saying, oh, we don't need to bother anymore parks, are gonna build on the parks. You've lost them, lost that. So don't want to ruin the city.
Thank you. Thanks, Larry. Anyone else here for public comment? So then we'll go to planning, mission, Q and A. I mean, this is getting a little too six, but if folks want to ask more questions, staff, that's totally fine. Just keep in mind we have a, our main meeting at six thirty.
And we can bring our food.
Go ahead.
I'm just curious, actually, have we actually talked to developers about specifically the issue of parks? Parks, I think, are a part of the marketing mix for development. And it's been a longstanding tradition of giving parks with development, which personally, and I can only speak personally, has made a big difference in my own experience with development. Is there any indication from developers that this is required reformulation to, to increase park fees? Is there anything actually happening?
Well, I mean, yes, there is a conversation going on about, is there something that the city can do? If not, I mean, if these were like block one, but construction, conveyance taxes, your inclusion in housing, your roof fee, your parks fees, can they be reduced in a way that might support development? And the development community always, if you ask them, do you want pizza? They say, of course I want pizza. So yes, they want them reduced. Well, it may give difference right now, you know. But they're, they're thinking as well, if rates start to come down, it might be able to kickstart them into being able to develop sooner than rather than later, turn and flip the project positive. So they definitely are advocating for that, but it's like, if you ask them, they're like, of course they want can. So.
Then they value it for that reason.
Right. Have you? Eric, be here. You can ask here.
Oh. Yeah, of course. I do have some questions, but in the end, there's a time where I might ask Michael. Could we email you some questions and then respond back to the whole commission? So, yeah, I mean, and if other commissioners have questions, I'd be happy to do that too. But I just wanted to say on behalf of my fellow commissioners, thank you for supporting this. Really, really well written. I really actually enjoyed reading it, even though it was long. It had a lot of very good information, but it was readable. You know, it was really nicely done, good graphics. I really liked the links. And, you know, I bookmarked it, so if I want to get a specific link, I can find it. And I, you know, I just know that all of you, you know, a lot of are putting this together, even, you know, D R T and other departments. So I just wanted to, on behalf of the other commissioners and the public, thank you for that. The other thing I wanted to say is, I was down at the Planning Commissioners Academy last week on the Cal Cities. And I think there was like over a hundred, maybe more cities represented. And it's, it was actually really interesting and heartening to me being down there because I think sometimes we can be our own worst critics and look at things and wow, this should be better, this should be better. Compared to a lot of cities in the state, we're doing really, really well on many measures, quality of life, parks, trails. And, and just to give you one more example, so the housing element, right? I think staff and others received some criticism because it took so long to get it approved. In the Southern California metro area, seventy percent of the cities do not have improved housing. So, you know, I think it's just important to, to put that in perspective that, I mean, I'm proud of Louisiana. I think we have a really wonderful city. I think we came, what, number three, number four, most livable city in the United States last week. And that, the credit for that goes to all of you and, and the other city staff. And I just, you know, I'm proud to be a resident and I'm grateful to be on this commission and just thank you.
Any other questions or comments for staff?
Of course, I had some comments. We met a few that I also enjoyed reading as well. I thought it was great work. You know, but I, I went to use some kind of barber. So I biked like four years doing it in a car. And of course, it wasn't until I was in San Francisco that I became aware of, you know, safety for the bike. I would like to see some sort of safety campaign, because now obviously we're doing so much to help people get out of the cars and use the bikes to be like, you know, look and turn or some, some, some sort of code. You're, you're telling people to walk. You know, because I had to do that because I was in San Francisco. So, yeah, we'd like to see something like that. And maybe certain corridors. Poor safety is really important because I want to make sure that there's no loss of life on the streets. Because especially like, you know, San Jose students to the sports area. Like if there can be a way where we can create something really safe for the students. And I'm talking about elementary, like in the urban villages, like really look at pedestrians and paths and lighting and signage that could be done in a way that ensures more safety. Crossing guards, flashing lights or whatever improvements we have to make on the ground. I think that's really important. And of course, public art and fun. I think that San Jose is such a fun place to live. And some of these old places have lacked, whenever you develop which new things. And so really trying to promote creating spaces for fun, also for families that live here. Just no more comments.
Any last for major? All right, we're adjourned this meeting at six oh seven. Thanks, everybody.